Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming today. Hope you all didn't have too hard of a time finding a parking space. Evidently, Disney on Ice is in town the next few days, so. I'd like to welcome you to our Spring 2024 NOFA or Notice of Funding Availability. I'm going to introduce the staff. My name is Bill Roth. I'm the Director of Housing here. And at the very end is Tom Nagel, our Public Information Officer, Evan Russell, a Housing Analyst and Asset Manager, Stephanie Christian, our Residential Housing Production Manager, Jacob Wilson, a Housing Analyst, Trey McCarter, who is our Environmental Review, Community Development Planner Specialist, and Karen Hutchins, who is a Program Manager for our Home ARP program. And Irv Hamilton, who's in the back, is our Construction Manager. A lot of you probably know Irv. And I saw Pam, but I don't see her now. It was one of our Housing Analysts. Okay, well, thank you all for coming. We're going to kind of divide this up as we present. Each of us will be speaking. We'll pause for questions at certain times. And you all may ask a question today that we may not readily know the answer to. So if that's the case, we will write the question down and then we will get back to you with it by posting our questions and answers on our website. And we'll talk more about that later on. All right, next slide, please. Can I do it? Okay. Okay, so this is kind of the lay of the presentation today. We're going to cover a lot of things. Just a basic overview on who CDA is, how the NOFA works, the timeline. We'll talk about the construction process, the different types of funding that are available. We have three actually different programs that we're soliciting proposals for how we will evaluate and rate the proposals. And then just kind of the application process itself and the awards. Next slide, please. Okay, so CDA, we are the Community Development Administration. We are actually a division of St. Louis City Government. And we are responsible for administering federal funds primarily through HUD, but also through the Department of Treasury through the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll talk about those funds as well. But we're here to serve the community. Besides housing projects, which you all are here for, we provide a variety of public service projects, home repair, other neighborhood programs, things like that. Next slide, please. Okay, that's just a example of a lot of the organizations we fund. All nonprofits, a variety of activities from daycare programs to after-school programs, food programs, youth and family services, neighborhood programs, public improvements. There's a whole gamut of things that we fund here at CDA. Next slide, please. Okay, so some key dates for the various NOFAs. First, obviously, you all got the notice that we just released it earlier this week on Monday evening. And for properties that the city owns, you would need to get in and look at those properties to kind of get an idea of what's going to be involved if you're planning on a rehab project. And the last date to get to those properties or inside to see them is April 8. And then we also encourage you, we'll talk more about this later, to get a preliminary design review so that you are talking to our architect and the Cultural Resources Office to get an idea if your proposed plan is actually going to meet the program requirements. Last day for that is April 15. And then the application deadline itself is April 30. And that's for the CDBG slash Home and the Home ARP Housing Timeline. We have a different NOFA, which we'll talk about on the next slide. Different deadlines. Okay, so we also, this is something we've not done before, but we have a program to take units, rental units that are vacant and put them back into productive use. And that timeframe is a little bit more advanced than the others. So March 8 is the last day for the LRA inspections. The Preliminary Design Review, the last day for that is March 15. And the application deadline itself is March 29. Right, next slide, please. Okay, so this kind of outlines our construction project, our process rather. And we're just kind of going to go over it broadly today, but the first step, of course, is at least of the NOFA itself. And then you all submit applications to us. We review those, we rate those, and then we award the projects. So after the award, there's various pre-development activities that have to take place to get you to a point where you can begin construction. We'll talk about those as well, but that includes the final budget, the construction budget, the design drawings, and the environmental and historic review, which Trey will talk about, Section 3 Compliance Plan. Stephanie will talk about that. And then just, you know, getting your contracts executed with us and you're securing your bank loan. And then, of course, there's a construction project, which, you know, depending on the size of the project, typically will take between nine and 18 months. There's some pictures of some examples on that slide there of projects before and after that we have done. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so how much do we have available? Well, we have about $18.1 million in all the different funding sources that we have. These funds can be used for acquisition, for rehab, for new construction, focusing on affordable for-sale housing and affordable rental housing, as well as supportive services and down payment assistance. So the different types of programs have different requirements. We'll go through those. But we have about $6 million, up to $6 million between block grant and home. For you all, you don't necessarily need to really know what the difference between those two funding sources are, other than I'll say this. Home can only be used for housing activities and block grant can be used for a variety of other things, which we talked about on that slide where we showed you all the different types of programs that we funded. But there are a little, there are some nuances between the two different funding sources that we'll talk about in a future slide. And then we have the Home ARP. ARP is American Rescue Plan, and that is for permanent supportive housing, which is to assist either homeless populations or those at risk for homelessness. And Karen will talk about that. And then we have the Vacant Unit Turn project, which I just mentioned. That's funded by the state and local fiscal rescue fund through the American Rescue Plan Act. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so Block Grant and Home, the two projects that we, or two types of programs we're looking to fund are for-sale housing and rental housing. And we are limiting this round to affordable housing only, no market rate. And we'll talk more about that as well. And rental projects will be affordable to households at certain AMI populations. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so here they are, so. With block grant funding, you have to meet a national objective. That's a HUD requirement. And the one that fits this program is low to moderate income housing. And it is for households that meet the HUD area median income guidelines or AMI. That's 80% or less of the AMI for a for-sale project and rental properties. The tenant's income would be at 50% or less of the area meeting income. If you're applying for a later on with the Missouri Housing Development Commission for a low-income housing tax award or tax credit award, the 50% AMI won't be an issue for you. All right, so what can our funds be used for? So we pretty much provide the gap between what it's going to cost you to build the project versus what it can sell for. So let's say it's going to cost you $300,000 to build a house, but it can only sell for 150. So the gap that you would need would be 150,000. That's what you can apply to us for. We don't provide 100% financing on these projects. We want you all to have some skin in the game. We like to see 50% or more of our funds leveraged with what you're providing. The reason for that is the more leverage our applicants provide, the more projects we can get done. So $18 million, sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not that much, you know, in a city of this size and all the needs that the city has here, so. The more that you can bring and the less of the gap amount that you request, you're going to actually score higher on that section of the application. All right, and then for the homeowners or the home buyers who knew or it's a rehab, our funds can be used for down payment assistance to help the buyer be able to afford that home. And depending on how much that amount is, it'll require that the homeowner live in that residence for five to 15 years before that loan is forgiven. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so who's eligible to apply? So for our block grant and home, for the for-sale rental projects, nonprofits, active housing organizations, includes neighborhood development organizations, community housing development organizations, also known as a CHODO. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. Or a CUBDO, that's a community-based development organization. Private builders and for-profit developers. So all those are the eligible applicants. One thing that's required, because these are federal funds, is that the applicants must have a unique entity ID, UEI, that is a HUD requirement through SAM.gov. SAM.gov stands for System Award Management. So you would have to, at least if you don't have that registration, you need to have started the process because we have to have proof that you're registered in that before we can execute any contracts with you. So there's a link on there to go to that website if you haven't done it. If you're a nonprofit and you've already been receiving funds from us, you should have it. You just want to make sure it's up to date. Just a little tip, they have folks at SAM.gov have actually added some additional requirements. So if you have to renew your registration, you may have to provide some documents you haven't done before. So you might want to take a look at that and see what you'd have to do to get that updated. All right, next slide, please. Okay, who is not eligible to apply? So if you are debarred by the feds or the state from participating in these publicly funded programs, you will not be eligible. The state publishes a debarment list and then the federal government uses it. We check that through the SAM.gov website. If you have failed to pay taxes that's owed to the city, you're not eligible. We're not going to give you taxpayer dollars if you haven't paid the city what you owe. That generally doesn't happen, but it is a requirement. If you have a loan with us before and you defaulted on that loan, you never paid us back, that includes if you got a tax credit bridge loan, you're not eligible to apply. We also don't provide funding through this program on a house which you plan to rehab or build so that you can live in it. It's not for owner occupants if you're the, if you plan to occupy it yourself. And then if your development team has anyone on your team who maybe works for the city or CDA or potentially is related to anybody and poses a conflict of interest, you wouldn't be able to apply. And then we will require you, as part of the application, to sign a conflict of interest disclosure statement. So if there is a conflict, you would have to disclose it to us and then we would Okay, next slide. I think it's Trey will take over on this section.
Right. So in this NOFA, we are offering bonus points to projects or applications that are located in priority geographies within the city. The internal city departments have run some analyses over the last year and a half to identify areas with great need and also great opportunity. And those are listed here in the Economic Justice Index, the Community Assets Map, and the Economic Justice Demonstration Areas. And there are mapping resources available on the NOFA website to where you can kind of scroll throughout and look at properties and decide where to locate your project based on some of these extra bonus points that you can get for locating in these areas. Next slide, please. And we're also offering bonus points for featured CDA and LRA properties. We have four of ours shown here. It's not the complete list, however. You can find that on the website or by scanning that QR code. I believe there are 12 in total. And to access the properties, you'll want to contact LRA. Tyler Arthur's contact information is provided there. And he can get you into the buildings. Please give him a 48-hour minimum notice, and we do require to have a waiver signed before entering. And next slide, please. And I believe Evan will be talking to you about CDBG and Home General Terms.
Thank you, Trey. If you're going the route of constructing a for-sale project, your award will be structured as a forgivable loan that will be forgiven upon satisfaction of the national objective. I'll be going over that in just a minute. As stated earlier, these projects have to go to an income-qualified home buyer. CDA will be approving that home buyer based on HUD regulations, 80% AMI or less on that. We do stress that the developer and the Realtor need to be clear about those terms and restrictions. Again, that home buyer must be 80% AMI or less, and they have to enter into a deed of trust with CDA for the duration of that compliance period. CDA will be providing a checklist and the required forms for HUD. We'll be documenting home buyer eligibility based on the HUD regulations. So we'll be providing, again, the forms, checklist, all the home buyer documents. Those will be put on the file for you. The satisfaction of the national objective is basically the home buyer must remain in the home as their primary residence for the duration of the compliance period. That compliance period will be based upon the amount of home buyer assistance you receive. Next slide, please. For rental projects, that award will be structured as a repayable loan with a compliance period of 20 years. And as stated earlier, you'll be renting to tenants who make 50% air median income or less. The repayment of that loan is 25% of the net annual cash flow of the project at 0% interest. The rental projects have to have a minimum of four units. Those can be fixed or floating. If they are fixed units, that means that the units designated as home assisted units will be, oh, sorry, will be designated as home assisted units throughout the affordability period. That'll be written into the agreement. For instance, if you have units, say, 101, 102, 201, 202, those will be your home assisted units throughout the 20 years. If they are floating units, they're designated as such at the start of the project, but you can switch over to other units during the affordability period. That's to account for, you know, a tenant may have more income, which pushes them above that 50% or unit turnover, which tends to happen. In which case, say, your unit 101, you can designate another unit, say, unit 301, as your home unit. The management plan must be reviewed and approved by CDA in order to assure compliance with HUD regulations. We will need a tenant income verification at the time of lease-up. There will be other tenant income verifications annually during the affordability period. Source documentation will be needed. In some cases, that can just be self-certification, signatures of the tenant themselves. There will be inspections of the properties. Those will be every one to three years based on the size of the project, and that is total units, not just the units that are receiving funding from us. Tenant protections, you can find the full list of those in Section 7B, but just to give you a few examples that we will need. Good cause eviction, as defined in federal regulations, prefiling of mediations prior to filing any eviction cases with the court. Tenants will be given 30-day right-to-cure notices. Landlords will have to accept, well, can't accept rental assistance funding in lieu of rent. And again, the full list of those you can find on the NOFA. Next slide, please. Now, go ahead, turn it over to Stephanie Christian to speak more on those compliance.
Thank you, Evan. There is a full list of the regulations and guidelines in each NOFA document, respectively. There may be variations between each of the three programs that we're offering in this round. I'm just going to pull out and highlight a couple, well, more than a couple, a few that are specific to federal funding and CDA or the city of St. Louis. We're going to speak very generally to give you an idea of the program regulations. I do want to let you know that once you are awarded, you will be assigned one of our team members to your project, and they will, they will work with you one-on-one to make sure that you have full understanding of all of the compliance guidelines and guide you through it step by step through your project. So first off, all of our CDA funding does need to go through a dispersing agent. Each of the applicants may choose who they want that dispersing agent to be. When you are looking for your dispersing agent and considering who that may be, it may be helpful if they do have experience working with federal programs, but not required. They will all have their own fee rates. And you can estimate what your dispersing fees will be for the project based on the amount of gap funding that you're requesting from us. And you'll want to make sure to include those fees as part of your development budget. Next item is timeliness. So when, once you're awarded, you will be awarded your funding reservation valid for 18 months. If for reasons unforeseen, you're unable to get your project under contract within that 18 months, you may submit to CDA a request for an extension to be considered. So if there are circumstances that are, you know, beyond your control and you feel like you could, you could still launch the project within an additional 12-month timeframe, you may submit that request to us for consideration. Once you are under contract, projects must begin within nine months and construction completed within 24 months of that contract date. Next item is Lead Based Hazard Reduction Act of 1992. This will apply to rehab projects when the property was built prior to 1978. A licensed lead professional must provide an initial risk assessment and remediation plan based on the results of that assessment. Section 504, for projects with five or more units, 5% of the units must be accessible to the physically handicapped. So if you have five units, at least one of them has to be accessible. An additional 2% of the units will need to be equipped for hearing and/or visual impairments. MBE and WBE requirements. This is, this program is administered by the St. Louis Development Corporation and is tracked through the Global Project Tracking System. So once your project is awarded, they will make contact with you, schedule your training, make sure you have all the information and tools you need to provide your reporting for that program. You'll submit your MWBE utilization plan through GPTS. And this will be triggered for projects whose construction costs are greater than $1 million. So this is only construction, the amount that, in other words, that is going to be on your building permit. And we have the breakdown here of what the MWBE percentages are for the projects. 21% African-American-owned businesses, 2% Hispanic-American-owned businesses, 0.5% Asian-American-owned businesses, 0.5% Native American-owned businesses, and 11% women-owned businesses. Next slide, please. Next up is Section 3. Section 3 is intended to provide economic opportunity for federally funded projects that are receiving 200,000 or more in CDBG and/or home funds. So this is inclusive of all sources. In other words, if you receive home funds from MHDC and CDBG or home funds from CDA, the combination of those awards, if it exceeds 200,000, it will trigger compliance for Section 3. Section 3 benchmarks are based on labor hours. 25% of the total labor hours are to be performed by Section 3 workers. And 5% of the total labor hours are to be formed by targeted Section 3 workers. We are providing sources on the website, which includes the definitions of Section 3 worker or targeted worker as well as the requirements to certify. Also, for Section 3 businesses, we will have all those forms and documents, including the reporting forms, up on the website. Probably by close of business today? Okay, by close of business today. So you can look at those, look at them over and review the definitions and the the requirements at your own time where you can absorb it. Quarterly reporting is required as well as annual reporting and a final project report. Your Section 3 plan will be submitted prior to the dispersment of any funds. And this is to be an estimate of your project labor hours. Your reporting should be actual. Davis Bacon and Related Acts. Davis Bacon is triggered when we have eight or more units financed by CDBG. Davis Bacon is um triggered when we have eight or more units financed by CDBG. Or twelve or more units financed by home. Again, that is a total for the project, so you must consider any home funds from MHDC as well. Prevailing wage um determination modifications are made periodically throughout the year. And they are posted on SAM.gov. So whichever wage determination modification is in effect at the time of your contract execution date. That is the prevailing wage requirements that will apply to your project for the duration of the project. Um each project must uh submit weekly certified payroll reports. This will also go through the GPTS system. And this is for each subcontractor as well as the general contractor on the project. Even if no activity has taken place, uh certified payroll report must be submitted stating such. And CDA will also conduct onsite interviews for no less than two workers from each co, each subcontractor onsite. It, it's a brief interview, um just verifying that they are earning the wages that are being reported. Community Based Development Corporation, oh, I skipped one, sorry. Build America by America. Um this is a newer regulation that went into effect in twenty twenty-two. Um this is a phased implementation effort to ensure that federally funded projects are. Um utilizing materials that are manufactured within the United States. So at the time of our twenty twenty-four awards. The um projects that will uh. Be beholden to Build America by America are projects that are funded with CDBG funds. And are receiving more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars in total federal financial assistance. Again, that includes um from the state. And they are utilizing iron and steel. Or construction materials that are specifically listed in the HUD notice. And I, I noticed, uh noted that it is page five of that HUD notice. That HUD notice is available on the CDA website. And it is um linked directly from within the NOFA. Um on the electronic uh copy of the NOFA as well, so you can access that and see the full list of the specific. Specifically listed materials that apply. To comply with BABA. We must um collect a BABA eligibility determination, which just basically asks you to check the boxes. If you meet the requirements from the first bullet point. Um and uh we will need to collect manufacturer certifications for the materials stating that they are. In fact, made in the USA. Now we'll move on to the community based development organizations and community housing development corporations. So new construction. Must be performed or sponsored by a community based development uh corporation or Cubdo. So if you are planning new construction. You will need to either provide your own certification if you are certified already. Or you'll wanna partner with someone who is already certified and can provide a letter of certification. Or you'll want to provide the, an application to certify. Those applications and further requirements again are available on the website and linked directly through the electronic NOFA. Cubdos. Are specifically for home funded projects and they are project based. So um if you are eligible as a Cubdo. I strongly recommend that you go ahead and submit the application for, uh I'm sorry, Chodo. I think I said the other one. If you are eligible as a Chodo. Uh strongly recommend that you go ahead and submit your, your application for the Chodo along with your um NOFA application. It will help the process um go along and um it, it may give you preference if we know that you qualify as a Chodo over. A project that does not. Cubdos are um. Are valid for one year and can be renewed annually. Once again, Chodos are project based and must be um certified for each project. Uh our next piece of compliance is going to be the environmental review, section one oh six review and CDA design process. And I turn it back over to Trey for that piece.
So if they're at the top, and we have Jan Cameron and the Cultural Resources Office. And Todd Jacobs, our architectural manager who's in CDA. And either myself or my colleague James Pfister. Um once you apply, if you're awarded, we'll be handling your environmental review and you can always contact us. Uh or we might contact you if we have questions. And then I just wanted to address. The CDA design guidelines, which happened concurrently with the environmental review. Um and just kind of give everyone a heads up that. Um this is a review of the minimum standards that CDA has set for our projects. And sometimes these go beyond what might be required by the building code. And I just think that it's helpful to know that in advance and we're just doing this review to make sure that we do meet our own design guidelines. Next slide, please. So in previous NOFA workshops, uh we thought maybe we haven't given enough attention to the environmental review because. Um we do get a lot of the questions about it after the fact and um it, it can be confusing. So I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of background, talk about the buzzwords, choice limiting actions. Mention some general timelines for how the environmental review is going to progress. And then talk about the section one oh six review process. So the purpose of the environmental, environmental review is really twofold. It's to make sure that our project's not causing harm to the environment or the surrounding area. And it's also to make sure that um any existing hazards in the environment aren't negatively impacting the occupants of our project. And for um new construction projects or major rehab projects, you typically have two levels of environmental re, review. One is um less intensive, it's called a CEST level review. This is really going to apply to like major rehabs. And then we have an environmental assessment level review and that um typically will include new construction. Uh changes of land use, mixed use projects. Um things of that nature. Next slide, please. Actually, um go back, I apologize. One thing I, I wanted to point out is that during this environmental review, we do look at sixteen different statutes and authorities. Um among other things for the environmental assessments. And some common areas that we. Have trouble with projects in the city of St. Louis are surrounding contamination, historic preservation, noise. Possibly explosives, inflammable hazards and flood plain, so. Um if your project were to have an issue, that it might happen with one of those particular laws or authorities. Okay, next slide. This is the topic that we, choice limiting actions are the topic that we probably get the most questions about. And um in the statute in twenty-four CFR fifty-eight point twenty-two, um it kind of lays out that. Uh before your environmental review is approved. You can't spend non HUD funds or HUD funds on any activities that. Might adversely impact the environment or limit the choice of reasonable alternatives. Um the goal of the choice limiting action statute is to make sure that the environmental review is impartial. And that we can explore alternatives if it's needed. So some activities that are definitely prohibited and would qualify as a choice limiting action. Um are demolition, actually acquiring a site. Site grading, leasing, rehab. But this isn't a comprehensive list, um these are just some of the items. So before taking any action, once you apply. Uh please talk with us just to, so we can make sure that everything's good. Next slide, please. Just a few more points on, on this. Um so I'm just going to refer to them as CLAs to save myself some time. CLAs are prohibited uh once an organization applies to CDA for federal funds. Option assignments on property are permitted. And some pre-development costs are CDV, CDBG eligible for reimbursement. Um and are excluded from the choice limiting ac, action requirement. But just please talk to us at CDA before taking any action. Um unfortunately, the ramifications are if you take a choice limiting action, uh we would rescind your award. Next slide, please. I think this slide is, is an important one, just to kind of inform how you build your budget and what you. Can expect from the environmental review and how long it's going to take. Uh that lower level review, a CEST level review, again mostly for rehab is gonna take two to three months. And the more intensive EA level review takes at least four months. Um that does include a fifteen, really a total one month comment period to the public and for HUD to review the application. Uh and these times don't reflect. Any issues that arise through the environmental review and it's also contingent upon. Um the development team's responsiveness to CBA and our, our requests. Next slide, please. And then finally, I, I wanna touch on the section one oh six review process. Um section one oh six refers to that section of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. Which requires evaluation of a project's effect on historic properties. And this includes impacts caused by new construction on adjacent historic resources, so. I just wanna tell everyone upfront that as the environmental review gets going. And if you're proposing building a, a new building or rehab in a historic area with an intact building. Or built environment around it, um as it goes through the one oh six process. We could ask that some things about the project maybe are updated. Uh to conform more closely with the neighborhood, whether that's changing the building materials on the front facade or windows or doors. Or um the placement of the buildings on the lot. Section one oh six is led by the Cultural Resources Office, which is another city department outside of CDA. And. It is separate from the CDA led designer. It gets a little confusing here because your contact for the design review will also relay the comments from the section one oh six. And um finally, I just want to note that. Since all three of these components, the environmental review, the section one oh six review and the CDA. Design review are all happening at the same time. Uh we won't be able to release the plans for permitting until um that complete environmental review is done. That's all I have on environmental review. So next slide, please. And I believe that we're opening it up for questions.
Yeah. As far as the properties. Saying they, the LRA property, when those also include the property said that they nominated for a proposition for as terms. Maybe a question you could build?
Are those eligible properties? Yes, they will. Any others? Yes, sir.
I see I'm gonna build twenty-five. And eight of them were affordable. The choose field, you know, eight months, if they're forming, even though they're part of the project.
Yes, we can only, we will provide subsidies for the affordable portion of the project. Yes. Uh to our panelists, if you can remember to unmute. Your mic on your device, uh so the folks online are being near you. Yes, ma'am.
Info, information in that office that asks for down payment assistance. Or would you pay to make the fifty thousand dollars that would be coming up? As part of the down payment assistance program?
We'll have to get back to you on that. There's some discussion that that might be prohibited. Because it's. I don't know if we're double dipping, but that's the best term I could come up with right now, so we'll have to get back to you on that.
And if, pardon, and if our panelists could just uh repeat the questions to, okay, so our folks online. Sure, ninety-two of them can hear, thanks.
Okay, let me repeat the question. I get your second question. The question was um whether or not. Uh there's fifty thousand dollar down payment assistance program that's gonna be available soon through SLDC. Whether or not applicants for our funding could get uh that funding. As well as funding from this, and that's something that has yet to be determined. Uh there may be some prohibitions to that, so we will post that specific question. And the answer to it once we know it um on our website, right, and your second question.
Um so we're more including that three thousand or thirty-five hundred in that down payment assistance slot. Are we able to add the funds to it then come from a source like Housing Partnership?
Yes, uh so the question was on the application itself, there is a cell. That uh you are supposed to put the down payment assistance available. Uh amount that's available if it's a for sale project. And whether or not funding was coming from a different source like uh nonprofit, the Housing Partnership. Um could you enter that there? And the answer is yes, you can. Uh I know some of the home buyers also get assistance from MHDC, uh so you could enter that there as well. Any others? Yes, sir. Um was that through LRA? Okay, so the question was, um gentleman was trying to acquire a property, it was owned by CDA. And uh but there were other interested parties. And so it just kind of stalled out, so um what I would say for that is let us have a discussion after this, uh we'll talk to you offline. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. So the, the question is, you already own a property and you've already started some of the rehab or? And you're looking for additional funding? Think that would be a choice one of them? He's already started rehab on a property he already owns?
No, as long as.
You can't do anything, right?
And now, after you uh apply, then you should stop all activity until the environmental reviews done.
Yeah. So the question for everybody uh who may not have heard uh on the, who's watching online. Uh he's already has a property that he owns, he started some rehab. Um would this prohibit him from participating? The answer is no, but once the application is submitted, he wouldn't be able to do any additional work until uh. You know, he was awarded funding and environmental review process went through. I will say um. Depending on what you're applying for, if it was a vacant unit turn, which we'll talk about in a minute. Uh environmental reviews don't requ, are, are not a requirement for the particular funding source, so. Uh but we'll talk about, more about that later. Any other questions? Yes, sir. So the question is, are there additional funding sources for environmentally, environmentally friendly um? Practices like solar, geothermal. Uh no, there are not. No, there are not. However, you will get bonus points in your application if you do. Utilize those technologies. So obviously, you would have to. Include the cost of that in your development budget. Yes, ma'am. Yes, so the question was if preliminary preliminary plans are submitted. Could you copy Jan Cameron with the Cultural Resources Office and Todd Jacobs? The CD Architectural Manager, the answer is yes.
I'd like to interject here and say something I forgot to mention in my section or segment, but um. So generally, for environmental reviews and section one oh six is part of the environmental review. Myself or Todd would really be the the best person to contact, so you could leave Jan off. I don't think that she would mind. Getting the correspondence. I just know that, you know, if she gets a lot. You know, sometimes she's not able to get to them because they have a lot of other things going on too.
Can you take it back to your email address?
Sure thing. Do you mind doing that, Todd?
Is contact information matter in seconds? The contact information is not in here.
So.
That may just have the CDA NOFA email, so you can probably take it from the slide here.
And the slides will be available after the presentation today as well.
You have several questions from online. You go through those.
We'll just, I'm going to work for folks listening. Online, I'm going to start from the bottom and go up. So does for sale funding, does that include condos?
It could. The. The question I would have is. Are you looking to? You know, rehab a condom? Well, if you're looking for new construction for condos, I think that's one thing that's easy. That's fine. But if you're trying to rehab an existing condominium unit next to another privately owned unit, that could get a little tricky. With shared, you know, firewalls and roofs and things like that. So. We typically don't do condominiums, but we would be open to it.
Great. And this person asked, can the panel please speak again about the fifty percent AMI requirement? And whether that is waived for projects applying for light tech?
Okay, I would say it's not necessarily waived. But I would imagine that. The units that CDA would potentially fund could be limited to the fifty percent AMI. Usually those light tech projects are, you know, several dozen units, and if we fund a handful of units. We would expect those units to be limited at fifty percent AMI.
The next question, when it comes to HUD requirements, is that all of them or just the eighty and fifty percent AMI?
There's a lot of HUD requirements. I'm not sure I. Understand the question if it's just limited to the AMI percentages. But. Those are what we are limiting our NOFA to. So there's there's more flexibility within the HUD regulations, but. We want to make sure that this housing is affordable, that's going to be produced through this NOFA, so we're limited to the eighty percent. AMI on for sale and the fifty percent AMI on rental.
This person is asking, could CDA be appointed to be a fiscal agent for funds?
I would say no. I'm not sure I really understand that question.
Yeah.
We may have to research that a little more and post an answer online.
Hey, a few more and then we'll let we'll keep moving. If you have already closed financing on a project that is home and or. NHTF via MHDC, Set National Historic Trust Fund. Are choice limiting actions still an issue, seeing that the property has already gone through a substantial environmental review? By HUD or and MHDC?
Yeah, we answered that one in the chat. We do, so as long as there's an environmental review on file. That's what counts, so we wouldn't have to redo the review, but we would have to get a copy of the existing environmental review. From MHDC or from HUD, and as soon as we got that and verified that it was complete, then. We would have it for our files and then you could take whatever actions were needed, but you couldn't do it until we verified that the environmental review was complete.
I think that's it for online questions. If I missed any to the folks online, go ahead and remind me and we'll make sure we get to them. And are we ready to move on to the next section of the presentation?
I want to add something to the last point that I just made. We do have an information sharing agreement with MHDC and they typically will advertise the CDA as a funder to a project and. We'll begin to clear what their environmental review is done, but with HUD, often they don't, we still do have to advertise, so it would add one month. Onto the project for the common period for the HUD. Funded portion, well. For a project that is duly funded by HUD and by CDA.
So there's the chat and the Q and A, so let's get into the Q and A. The HomeARP Permanent Supportive Housing Grant. I think maybe let's get back to that when we get to that section. So this person asks, if I own a house free and clear and it's a single family, but zone for multifamily. Would it be considered new construction if I expanded it to a multifamily?
That may be a question for zoning. At the building division, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, we're not sure. It would be a change of land use and I don't know what the process for that is.
Okay. Can business funding or business line of credit be used as skin in the game for developers?
Yes, but you would have to provide evidence that you have that amount available.
Okay, two more, and then I think we'll move on. Are sheriff tax sale properties, can those be used? Heard for this NOFA?
Yes, those are LRA properties and we love getting LRA properties back into productive use.
Okay, so that's it. There are a few about permanent supportive housing, but I'm going to make a note. And we'll get to those when we get to that section of the presentation. There's a few more in the chat. Do we want to do those later and knock them out now, panels? Do we want to?
Let's knock them out.
Knock them out now? Great. Will neighborhood review committees be allowed to give input on decisions? On decisions to CDA before they're approved? Not sure I understand that.
It's not a requirement of CDA that a neighborhood review committee has to. Review a proposal. It's not a federal requirement. So the neighborhood you want to build in or. Rehab in, they may want to have some input, so I would suggest talking to them directly.
Great, a few more questions and then we'll move on. If I at home landed, want to do new, a new construction project for the rental program. How would I go about doing so? How would I go about finding contractors that qualify to do the work?
Well, I would say, you know. You would need to identify how much it's going to cost, have a good idea of what it will cost. You know, seek if you can get the necessary financing, whether it's through a bank loan or some other sort of equity source. And through the gap financing that we would. Offer. As far as finding contractors. I would say you would want to find a good general contractor. And a good general contractor should have relationships with different subcontractors, whether heating and cooling or. Electrical plumbing, roofers, things like that to to do the work for them.
I'm going to add to that just a little bit as well. Your architect can be a great resource. So when when you are looking for an architect, if you are able to find one who has experience. With federally funded projects in particular, they may also be able to give you some names of contractors who have worked in similar type projects as well.
Great, let's do two more and then move on as it's almost quarter after two. Do these funds, do they cover the cost of environmental testing? And about how much are costs for environmental testing?
That's going to depend on what potentially is on site and what it has to be tested for. Not every project. Is going to require environmental testing. But yes, funding for the program or funding through this NOFA could be used for that.
Great, let's do one more and then move on. And this person asks. Does the property have to be LRA and does work have to be done by the CDC?
Uh, no, and no.
Let's move on to the next section. There are questions still there about other topics that we're going to go through. So let's, let's go ahead and move on through this PowerPoint.
Okay, we'll go ahead and introduce Karen Hutchins, our program manager for HomeARP, and she will introduce the guidelines. For our permanent supportive housing.
Stephanie, good afternoon to everyone. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. All right, you're still with us. This is the seven ending stretch, right? So I'm excited to announce our Home ARP, Home ARP Program. And it is an extension of Home. You're probably already familiar with CDBG and Home. This is specifically for providing homelessness assistance and supportive services for the homeless. So it is a very specific purp- purpose program. Our NOFA funds permit for supportive housing programs that go along with. The housing and we are really interested in permanent supportive housing. And simply what that means is we'll help you provide the housing and services to go along to assist those. Who are homeless or at risk homeless and we'll look at the eligible. Persons that will be serviced by these programs. Next slide. Eligible applicants are the same as the CDBG and Home Program. And in the same regulations, pretty much guide this Home ARP Program. Eligible applicants, those who can apply for these funds are nonprofit active housing organizations. Neighborhood development organizations. You heard earlier the conversation about the Chodos. And the Cubdos, you are eligible to apply private builders and for-profit developers. And all applicants must have a unique entity ID. That's a UEI with SAM.gov. And you basically on our, in our NOFA, we do have a link where if you don't have a UEL. You can go to SAM.gov and register for one, but please note this is a requirement. So make sure that you have that when you apply. All Home ARP projects must service one or more qualifying populations. We call that QP. And again, simply homeless and there's a definition of homeless. I won't go through the whole length of that. But that is available to you at CFR twenty-four ninety-one point five. At risk of homelessness are also qualifying populations. And then a category we call fleeing, maybe domestic violence or dating balance. You're helping to house sexual assaulted persons. Or persons who are being stalked or human traffic. These are all considered fleeing. Populations and they are part of the qualifying populations that you're able to support with the housing. Then we have in other populations where providing supportive services or assistance would prevent family homelessness. So sometimes you have persons who you've helped before and provided homeless. Housing to, and then something changes, maybe their income changes and they're at risk again. They do qualify as quali- qualifying population. And then those who are greatest risk of housing instability. Maybe their house, but now the roof is caving in or the wall is collapsing. Those are the kind of persons we're able to help provide housing and services to. And then, of course, veterans, any veterans in the room. All right, there are veterans and families, including a veteran family member that may meet one of the preceding criteria. So these are all of the qualifying populations. Next slide, please. So our Home ARP proposals must include a development project and a partner partnering supportive service program. So we want you to, in your project, think about the services that you need to support. The tenants that you'll be housing. The development project and the supportive service program would be submitted separately. There are two separate applications and you'll see that on the system when you're applying. So make sure you understand there's two separate applications, one for the housing portion. And then one for the supportive services. And we would like for you to include a letter of intent from each partnering organization. Developers must be able to demonstrate site control of non-CDA properties by ownership. Or by an option for LRA properties. So site control is. Is a requirement when you apply. All Home ARP awards must be under contract by September thirty, twenty twenty-six. All Home ARP awards must be under contract by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And fully expanded by September thirtieth, twenty thirty. So that is seven years from today. That's a different timeline than the previous Home and CDBG Opera Projects that we've talked about. So we have a different timeline for the Home ARP programs. And so you have more time to get your your project together, think through what is really needed and really submit. A good pro- program. Extensions will not be available. There will be no extensions past the timelines that's just mentioned. General terms for CDBG and Home rental projects apply, including but not limiting to. Dispersing agent is required, just like CDBG and Home. Forgivable loan with a twenty-year compliance. This is different than the fifteen-year compliance. So forgivable loan with a twenty-year compliance period serving the QPs. Tenant verification at lease-up, annual tenant verification reporting. and annual CDA inspections will be required. And tenant protections apply, and you can get those details in Section 9. Next slide. Examples of eligible projects include acquisition, rehabilitation, or new construction. You can acquire property, rehab property, or develop new construction for multifamily dwelling rental housing. Multifamily dwellings, rental housing, we even like tiny homes, hotel motel conversions, manufactured modular container housing is eligible, and non-congregate shelter, provided that, one, the property serves one or more HomeARC qualifying populations, and two, make supportive services available to its residents through the HomeARC supportive services. Again, we want you to do both, provide housing and offer supportive services. Not less than 70% of the total number of HomeARC rental units assisted must be restricted for occupancy by qualifying households. And we told you the qualifying households are homeless, at-risk homeless, fleeing, uh, veterans who fit that category, uh, all of those persons. Uh, not less, not less than 70 pro five, 70% of the total number of HomeARC rental units must be for those qualifying populations. Not more than 30% of the total number of rental units assisted by HomeARC may be restricted for occupancy by low-income families and individuals. Understand, low-income families and individual is different from qualifying households. With qualifying households, income is not considered. They just have to qualify as being homeless, at-risk, or veterans who fit that population or fleeing. But when it comes to the 30%, the income is an, an element of consideration, and they must be occupied, not more than 30% can be occupied by low-income families or individuals. Low-income units are only permitted in projects that also include qualifying population units. That's because the main purpose of HomeARC is to s- assist the homeless, okay? So you have to make sure you provide housing for the qualifying populations, and then you can do uh, 30%, not more than 30% for low e- low the mod income. Okay? Next. HomeARC funds may be utilized to subsidize the development of eligible projects by funding the following expenditures. And this is really good news for the developers, right? Development cost, acquisition cost of improved or unimproved real property. Refinancing, and this is huge, refinancing of existing debt secured by rental project rehabilitated with HomeARC. Those are eligible costs under the HomeARC program. Soft cost, relocation must follow the Uniform Relocation Act of 1992, and those details are also, and there's a link in the NOFA uh, for you to follow. And costs relating to payment of loans. These are eligible costs for HomeARC. Next slide. Operating costs include and are allowable when no other operating cost reserve is already established. When there's no other operating cost reserve already established. Operating costs may be either ongoing operating cost or capitalized operating cost reserve. Operating cost assistance is allowable only for QP restricted units, qualifying population restricted units. Must not exceed the amount to operate the qualifying population restricted units for 15 years. Any remaining reserves after the 15-year period will be recaptured. HomeARC operating cost reserves must be held in a separate interest-bearing account. This is important information. HomeARC operating cost reserves must be held in a separate interest-bearing account. So you wanna make sure you'll be in compliance when that annual check comes, that you have your operating cost reserve held in a separate interest-bearing account. Size based on an, an analyst of project operating deficit. Size based on analysis of project operating deficits after anticipated rents from QP units are applied. Here are some eligible operating costs. Payroll, employee education, training, travel, housing administration goods and services, day-to-day management costs of your HomeARC QP units, ongoing payments or capitalization of replacement reserves based on useful life of major systems are eligible operating cost. Next slide. Now, these are eligible activities for your supportive services. So these are some of the things you would like to provide as you uh, provide housing. Housing counseling by HUD certified provider. You can also go on the HUD exchange website, and they have their counselors listed so that if you don't already have someone on your team that is HUD certified, you can contact one of the certified counselors off of the website. Uh, they have rental housing counseling, pre-purchase home buying, homeless service tools. So all of this is available for you to uh, provide uh, for your QPs in supportive services. The McKinney Bento uh, Bento 40129 uh, Act, Transitional Housing and Homeless Services uh, regulate the services that are eligible. Homelessness prevention services are eligible supportive expenses uh, services. A full list of eligible costs is located in your NOFA Section 7. So you can get a full list. There are more lit- than what we've listed here. Next slide. Are there any questions? Yes. Uh, the answer to your question, no, there is no age limit. The qualifying population simply has to be homeless and at-risk homeless. So as long as it's a qualifying population, you can provide housing. Um, I'm not sure about while they're in high school, uh, if you're able, uh, they, they are not associated with a family? Because you can provide housing for the family. So that's addition to providing the housing is the supportive service. Yes, that is. That is a eligible service.
Karen, could you quickly repeat the question for those on the internet?
Uh, yes, the question was asked, uh, would he be able to provide supportive services? Was there an age limit in providing supportive services, uh, for an example, to high school students uh, who are, who may transition and need their own housing? And uh, some of the services he would like to provide would be training and development services, and the answer is no, there is no age limit, and yes, it is an eligible supportive service. Any other questions? Yes. I would say, oh, the question is, uh, is there room in the HomeARC that would provide um, for recovery supportive services? And the, the answer to that is yes, if it is supporting your qualifying uh, population, which is homeless, at-risk homeless, or fleeing. And so if it, it, and it, it says um, non-congregate uh, occupation uh, occupancy, I believe.
So remember that the, the supportive services have to accompany a development project. So if you have a development project, that includes a multifamily dwelling, uh, what all, what all did we say? Tiny homes, um, non-congregate shelters, hotel motel conversions, um, so congregate shelters are not eligible as a housing development. But if you wanted to provide services, what you might be able to do is partner with a developer who does wanna do that, that development piece, and you can provide your services as their partner.
That is specifically HUD's uh, uh, requirement that is non-congregate. And so uh, like we have a um, project that is actually a hotel motel conversion, and they are able to provide a uh, non-congregate shelter by simply adding the kitchen, making sure that the room has its own kitchen and bathroom.
So that's taken care of in the design of the project. So if you wa- if you were interested in a new construction project for non-congregate uh, housing, and then you wanted to add that service, yes, you can do that. But as Stephanie stated, there's nothing uh, to support congregate living at this point.
I, I will add, however.
Sorry. For the panelists, if we can repeat the questions for the folks.
Okay, sure.
Online, I, I know it's not ideal, but we're making it work. We're complying with HUD, holding this meeting both ways.
Sure, no problem. Um, so we are in discussion now about uh, the development of congregate shelters with the use of HomeARC funds. Um, and unfortunately, congregate shelters is not an eligible development use with HomeARC funds. But I do wanna point out that with multifamily dwelling, you can house up to three individuals per unit that are non-family members. So um, for that accountability and for having somebody else there, that may be an option to look into.
Go ahead.
So your first question is.
Uh, can you have access to the, this presentation? And the answer is yes to that question. Uh, the second question is, would you have to go through the signature process uh, that the city uh, have in place in order to uh, build new construction for homeless housing? And so the answer to that currently, that is what's in the regulation. But in our NOFA, we have zoning uh, requirements or suggestions. Uh, there is a zoning process called a PUD where you can actually um, have a zoning overlay of a particular area. And then that way, you can construct as multifamily housing with the, within the PUD and may be able to avoid the, the signatures. Okay, so that's something that we have, we recognize that may be a barrier to new construction of homeless housing, but we have already uh, discussed ways of allowing or to work with you to get it done. Thank you. Yes. Okay, that'll be fine. Any other questions?
Just one more note on the zoning is that the multifamily dwellings are allowable by right in the multifamily zoning districts.
We do have a few questions uh, online specific to permanent supportive housing. Does this grant, does it also have the same uh, extra bonus point criteria with the economic justice index, et cetera?
The, there are specific bonus points for each program that are listed in each respective NOFA. So there are some that are overlapping, but there are some that are different for each one too. So I would refer you to the NOFA document itself for the full list of bonus points.
Okay, and I think a lot of these have kind of been covered before, but, so we can go through them quickly. It is 2:40. So I know we wanna get started on the next part. Can one applicant um, do both the services and development for permanent supportive housing?
Uh, can, yes, uh, they can do both, but again, it's two separate applications.
Okay, we'll go, we're just gonna go quickly. Are Oxford houses eligible? I had to Google this, and it looks like they're uh, uh, substance recovery homes.
Again, um, the supportive services is attached to the hu- the housing production. So an Oxford house is kind of like a group home, and that's a different zoning criteria. So we would have to look at that to see uh, if it's new construction, if it falls in line with the zoning criteria as multifamily. Um but it's not uh necessarily uh a supportive housing type.
Well, we're gonna do about two more and then move on. Uh what is CDA's definition of non-congregate living? Does that mean each unit has its own bathroom and kitchen? Can we clarify?
Yes, that's exactly the difference. Uh congregate living is open space, you share kitchen. You share uh the uh living space. Now, in a non-congregate, you have your separate bedroom with its own kitchen and ba- uh bath.
And then to expand on that, do we have any definitions on what a kitchen is, for example, a motel hotel kitchenette?
The the zoning code does define, well, we look to find the zoning code for kitchen. You have to actually use the building code uh for kitchen and that code says. That it has to be a full kitchen with a stove and a refrigerator and an oven. That's the definition of a kitchen according to the building code.
Full size.
Full size. Not a kitchenette.
Um we do have some more questions, but I know we have a whole nother section, so let's move on. And then I'll just remind everyone that we'll be here in person available after. And also in the NOFA, there is an email address for questions. And all of those questions will get, the answers will be published online. To ensure that uh fair competitive process, all the questions and answers. But someone in the back is a quick one.
Uh they are federal dollars. We ask that you disclose that in the application. Um uh for your supportive services. However, again, the supportive services is tied to your housing development project. So uh does that answer, first of all, the question online was um with. If a person or an uh organization is getting funds from uh CDBG already. Or uh rapid rehousing, is it double dipping to apply for home art financing or funding? And the answer to that is we'd like for you to disclose your additional funding. But we also look at your supportive service in relationship to your housing uh project proposal.
His historically, the the double dipping comes into play when. Two sources of funding are paying for the exact same expenses. So you know, i- it is possible that it could pass if. The other source of funding was paying for a certain certain portion or certain um activities or costs. And then this is paying for other activities and costs.
Great, let's go ahead and move on to the next section, just so we make sure that we get. To everything. Some people might be here for the exciting part three, so we want to make sure we get there in a timely way.
See, we got a great groove here. Our next section is uh vacant unit terms. Uh we are gonna talk about that next slide. Very quick, very short. We're almost there, ninth inning, ninth inning, guys. Um slur fake in unit terms, eligible activities for these funds. Are maybe utilized to facilitate the repairs, maintenance and updates. Say this with me, repairs. Maintenance and updates of vacant rental units. Vacant rental units for the preservation, say preservation. Keyword of affordable rental housing in the city of St. Louis. So this is for vacant units already existing, already identified. But they are not inhabitable because they have some kind of repair. Maintenance or update that is needed, okay? Eligible applicants, this is only for for-profit developers and CDCs. Only for nonprofit developers and CDCs, okay? We didn't do that, we just know that this is where the money needs to go to the eligible applicants. All applicants must have a unique in entity ID, the UEI. And again, you can get that at sam.gov, next slide. Bacon unit terms, general terms you might want to know. Now, this is two point five million dollar budget. But the maximum subsidy for each unit is fifty thousand. That's up to fifty thousand, so some units only maybe need ten thousand dollars worth of repair or less. But you can get a maximum subsidy of fifty thousand per unit. Dispersing agent is required. A dispersing agent is required, just like CDBG and home. Award expires on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Say October thirtieth. Twenty twenty four. It must be fully expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty six, say twenty twenty six. Okay, so we got a little time, right? We're just in twenty twenty three. Extensions will not be available, up twenty four, we got less time than that, I'm sorry. I was trying to give y'all a little extra, but hey, we are already in twenty twenty four. Thank you for that correction. Uh extensions will not be available. Compliance period of twenty years renting CDA units to fifty percent AMI. The compliance period is twenty years, not fifteen. Units may be fixed or floating. Tenant income verification is required at least up. Annual CDA inspections and tenant income verification is required. So this is different for the, like the home art, you know, you just had to be a qualifying population. Your uh income is uh needed to be verified or the tenant's income must be verified. Tenant protections apply again to section, as in section seven. CDBG and home compliance does not apply with the exception of Lead Base Hazard Reduction Act. And MWBE, okay, next slide. Any questions? I told you it would be short. Yes. This is vacant units, yes. Different program. Yeah, this is already existing units that have already been identified. Uh for low income housing that's been in this this repair or need maintenance or updating.
CDBG home NOFA for that.
Right, good job, good question, yes sir. Yes, sir. The question was would a for-profit have to partner with a nonprofit in order to participate? And the answer is yes.
Yeah, what what this is designed to do is. There's a lot of nonprofits in the city who have a portfolio of rental units that are currently vacant because they need repairs. So this is to help them get those units back online. So the partnering, you would do maybe as a general contractor with one of those organizations.
Thanks, Beash. Question?
The maximum unit amount, is there any consideration to adjusting that for bedroom size?
For the vacant unit turns?
Yeah.
So the question was, is there any consideration that will be given to the maximum subsidy amount of fifty thousand per unit? On the vacant unit turns if it's more than three bedrooms, three plus bedrooms. Right now, I'd say no. But I mean, if you were able to leverage it with other sources. You know, maybe our fifty thousand plus whatever you brought to the table.
Sure, uh do you have any idea how many awards you would anticipate to make or what the what amount would look like out of that?
So the question was, do we have any idea how many awards we would make um from the two point five million available? No, we don't. I think um it's gonna depend on the number of applications and how many units there are. Obviously, we'll try and stretch our dollars as far as we can, but I don't have a number in mind right now, how many awards we might make.
I have, I guess, a related question. If there was a a lower award, like a minimum award, would the twenty year affordability still be the requirement?
Yeah, so the question was that there was a lower cost per unit. Would the twenty year affordability uh requirement still be in effect? And the answer is yes.
It is just hard costs that will be eligible for the subsidy or stock costs or developer fee or um.
So the question is, is it just hard costs that are eligible or other things like a developer fee or admin?
Or architect.
Architect, yes, those kind of things, architect. That would definitely be eligible. Any of those other pre-development costs like to get the project to the forefront.
I would say not for the actual administ construction.
Yeah, well, I was considering architect like pre-development, because you gotta get the drawings done before you, you know.
I was thinking more like, have this helped phone permits.
Permits. Yeah, right, permits of those, yes, eligible.
And then I guess I have a question about the compliance requirements. One of them says no, no restrictions on criminal background.
You talking about the tenant protection?
Any that we could not reject, if it were received upon, we could not reject any applicant based upon any criminal background.
Uh that's gonna be a while, we're gonna have to get back to you on the question was. Um on the tenant protection requirements, uh there's reference to criminal background. What are, what does that really mean? Any criminal background or any, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have to get back to you on that.
No restrictions on residence based on criminal records or past evictions unless otherwise.
Okay.
And I guess if a some other ones, I guess if we could update about like the. What the procedure would be for like the mediation and the notifying different agencies, some of that stuff is included, it's required, but. Here's the what, how that is.
The question was, uh there's mediation requirements. Uh in the event that there is a potential eviction, what those requirements exactly are, reporting. Informing other organizations. Uh I think we need to flesh it out some more, Paul, and get back to you on that. So the question was, is there a list of organis- nonprofit organizations? And um that was part one, and we don't maintain such a list. Uh second part of the question would be if you found a nonprofit organization to partner with. Who kind of sets that up? And that would be you, we wouldn't, we can't be involved in the application process at all. So you would have to work that out with a nonprofit yourself.
And I happen to know that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Or Lishin has a list of housing nonprofits on their website. So that would be a good place to start if you're looking for a nonprofit to partner with.
So the question is for any of these programs, right? Is there a number of minority or women uh business enterprises that had to be there? So uh I would answer that is we are looking for minority and women business participation. Every single project. Um where it's mandated um is when there's a billion dollars or more in construction cost. And that's when you have to do the reporting. But um we do give points in our application for MB and W participation regardless of. The construction cost. So if you're just doing one house and you're only asking for, you know, a hundred fifty thousand. We want to see MB and WB participation. Yes, ma'am. So the question is if somebody's in the process of uh being certified, is that okay? Uh I would say yes, but just point that out in the in your application to us that this. MB or WBE is currently um under review for being certified. Anything else?
You have several online and I'll just kind of read them out. Uh many of these we've answered before. Do we have a list of approved fiscal managers and or grant administrators? I'm not sure I understand that uh question.
I don't know, I understand it either.
You like disbursements?
Maybe, like title companies dispersing agents.
Yeah.
Um we don't have a list. You know, we don't want to recommend anyone. So um. You know, probably a Google search could turn up St. Louis area dispersing agents. I would suggest that. Or um if you work with the bigger general contractor, a lot of times they, you know, use a a particular dispersing agent, so they can give you a lead there as well.
Great, and then um with vacant unit turns, um how are we defining uh uh affordable housing? So how do we know this unit, if it is vacant, that it was affordable housing? What's our definition?
So it needs to be affordable after the unit is. Rehabilitated, so um. We would expect to see um some sort of um documentation that you're renting to. Somebody who uh meets the AMI percentages.
Great, this one has some uh great jargon and acronyms. Um if we are circling to turn off line units as part of a li-tech recindication of existing affordable properties. Should we be applying for housing production or for the vacant unit turn NOFA? And then the second part is also, the unit turn NOFA refers to bonus points for LRA slash CDA property. But wouldn't it be that those properties, wouldn't it be for properties, sorry? We, it refers to LRA properties, but isn't this for not for properties that are already owned by an applicant? That they want to fix their own vacant properties?
So the vacant unit turn application, NOFA mentions LRA properties?
Not sure, I'd have to dig.
That's an oversight.
Okay.
Uh for development of CDA or LAR properties. Um is that what they're talking about?
That's what it sounds like that there's. There might be an oversight that we should review, get back to the.
So I think the the intent of that was. Well, first of all, let me backtrack and say, yes, you are correct. The applicat- the NOFA does state that we're looking for non-for-profit developers and CDC. Non-for-profit developers and CDCs who already own a portfolio of properties. In. The vast majority of cases of city-owned properties. They per unit is gonna require more than fifty thousand dollars to turn. Um, I think we decided to leave that in there on the off chance that there was a unicorn in the mix. Um, that might be able to be turned for fifty thousand or less. So if that is the case, you are welcome to propose that property.
Great, um, can we quickly explain, we've used these terms fixed and floating? What do those mean?
Have any idea, do you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, so um. Fixed units, so if it's a rental project, you're getting home funding, say. And um, you have. Fifty units in the project. And we are providing funding for five of those units. You can either establish that you want those units to be permanently, or at least the the period of compliance. Those units are gonna be your fixed units, they can't move around. So. Um, it could present a problem for you if the tenant all of a sudden is. Has gotten a raise at their job, and now they're no longer, you know, income eligible. So um, where if you float the units, you can, you know, say. You know, this unit is my unit right now, but then, you know, later on, you want to move it to another unit. But you do have to establish that upfront. So you can't, you can't do it after the fact. So um. My advice would be to do floating units.
Uh, two people have asked um, kind of similar question. Do these vacant unit turns, do they have to be in uh multifamily units, or could even a single-family home be a part of that?
Can't imagine a single, well, I don't know how many um. Single-family homes would need less than fifty thousand if they're vacant. That could be hard to find. I guess they would be eligible if they're in the portfolio of the. Of the nonprofit.
Okay, we just have a few more on the internet there. I think they're pretty general, pretty clear answers. Um, can someone use multiple properties and have those multiple properties in different programs? I assume different applications for different properties.
So they would apply for two different programs for this, basically the same thing. Is that what they're asking?
I think the question is, can they submit multiple applications for different programs?
Yes.
Yes. Um, some clarification on that question for fiscal managers and grant and administrators. They're referring to an organization that really doesn't have the experience. Or capacity to do grants management, and I don't know if we can recommend. Consultants to manage grants.
No, and that's not something we provide either.
Um, here's a new question. Um, I thought all ARPA funds had to be fully expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. But we mentioned ARPA funds had to be expended by September thirtieth, twenty thirty.
It's that difference is, ARPA funds is twenty six, home art is twenty thirty.
Home art is administered through HUD. And so the timelines are a little different. Um, ARPA is through the treasury.
Great, um, are there any, I'm going through to make sure I hit the important ones that we haven't gone on. From the panel, are there, is there anything we haven't talked about, or?
We have more slides.
Oh, we have more slides, oh my.
We have. How do you apply?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
You wanna notice the mixture application, right? All right, Jacob is gonna let you know how to do that, and then we will wrap it up.
All right, thank you all. Thanks Karen. Um, that was the ninth inning, this is the tenth. Um. Thanks for sticking around. Um, we will talk about bonus points. These are. Possible points that applicants can accrue while filling out the various applications. Um, we will discuss uh the bonus points for CDBG and home funds, home art funds, and uh the vacant unit turns funds. Uh, evaluation criteria. We'll discuss how the C- CDA selection committee will determine how uh we award funds. Um, we'll evaluate complete applications on qualifications, financial feasibility, management, capacity. Uh, accessible and sustainable designs amongst other criteria, other criteria we've already mentioned. Um, the application process, uh, all applications must be completed and submitted through the Salesforce platform, which we'll talk about a little bit more. Um, there's a link on the, on the uh CDA website to Salesforce. Um, all required applicants, applications, uh, application contents must be submitted in full through Salesforce. Uh, the sale, there will be a Salesforce demonstration that will take place on a date yet to be determined. Um, but we will publish the uh publicly post what that is. Um, each project should be submitted separately on their own application. Um, it should be noted that multiple properties or parcels can go on a single project's application, however. Um, but each project should be on their own separate application. Um, applications submitted by email or in person will not be considered for award. Um, and awards uh after a through and complete, a thorough and complete review, CDA will announce selections for funding award reservations. Uh, for spring twenty twenty four NOFAs. Um, next slide, please. Now we're talking about bonus, bonus points. Um, each. Um, each NOFA has its own requisite bonus point uh ability um with some crossovers. Just for everyone's reference, CDBG and home bonus points will be located on page seven of that respective NOFA. Home art bonus points on page nine of that respective NOFA, and the vacant units will be on page six. Um. There are, again, some crossovers. Uh, so for all three. Um, NOFAs, development of CDA or LAR, LRA properties will be awarded uh three bonus points. Um, as well as uh development of CDA featured properties. Um, those will in fact get, get an additional five points. Um, rehabilitation of vacant properties for CDBG and home. And home ARP will get an additional five points. That is not applicable to vacant, as all vacant properties are just that. Total development costs uh per unit will be given additional uh criteria um for CDBG and home and home ARP. Anything other than, other, less than two hundred fifty thousand uh will get an additional five points. Um, bonus points and. Um, CD, CDA subsidy costs limited uh to less than a hundred thousand for CDBG home. And home ARP will be awarded uh a bonus of five points. Um, and CDA subsidy costs of fifty thousand or less for CDBG and home. Just CDBG and home funds will get an additional ten points. Again, all this information is detailed on the respective NOFA bonus point uh sections. See, for CDBG and home bonus points, uh. There will be bonus points for uh those targeting thirty percent AMI residents. Um, additional bonus points. Um, that implement priorities in the neighborhood plan. Um, and those, those bonus points are, are five points for uh CDBG home and home ARP. The neighborhood plan is not applicable to vacant. Projects that include three-bedroom units uh for larger families, uh, this is applicable to all three NOFAs and. Um, they will have five points, five bonus points awarded to those projects. Um, projects that are uh designed with further. Quality standards uh for sustain- sustainability. Um, such as uh the use of cement board, LP smartboard, or steel in lieu of vinyl siding. Uh, and five-eighths inch drywall um will also. Uh, be awarded respectively five points each. Um, and that's for CDBG and home and home ARP, not vacant um NOFA. Five points we will be awarded to CDBG home or home art uh projects that uh have manufactured housing. Um, as Karen said, uh modular home and container homes will, will be included in that uh design. Applicants who are city residents or businesses incorporated within the city will receive an additional five points. And that is for CDBG home and home ARP. Um, and then again, uh with MWBE businesses, uh an additional five bonus points will be awarded to CDBG. Home or home ARP uh that, that displays um uh strong preference for those businesses. Um, specific to just home ARP. Uh, NOFA, uh, bonus points will be awarded to. Um, projects that are within the proximity of, of community assets. Uh, two points will be awarded to each project within a thousand feet of light rail, major bus routes, or proposed metro link alignments. Um, two points will be awarded to projects within a thousand feet of a public school, and two points will be awarded to projects. Uh, with uh, within a thousand feet of parks. Um, again, with, with home ARP, uh, one point will be awarded uh to projects within a thousand feet of uh grocery stores. Um, within a thousand feet of a health clinic. Uh, also uh recreation centers and public libraries. Again, one point will be given uh to each of those respectively. Um, vacant properties, uh. NOFAs, these are specifically for them. Um, there's a touch of crossover. Development of CDA or LRA property will be. Uh, given three points. Um, development of CDA featured properties, five points. Uh, CDA subsidy costs per unit of twenty thousand or less will receive an additional five bonus points. Uh, lytec projects um will receive five bonus points. Um, again, in vacant NOFA applicants, uh, four-family buildings will get additional five points. Um, and uh, projects that include, again, three-plus bedrooms, three or more bedroom units, uh, for larger families. Will re- receive five points as well. Next slide, please. Okay, the evaluation criteria. Uh, the CDA selection committee, um, because of financial limitations, uh, the application process is, is highly competitive. We may not be able to fund every qualified application and project. Um, after the open, open application period is closed on April thirtieth at midnight. Um, CDA staff will then begin initial evaluation for eligibility and completeness. Uh, the applications that meet the required criteria will advance to the evaluation and ratings portion of the uh. Uh, rating stage. Evaluation criteria, things that we look for. Um, the evaluation process begins after staff confirms that they've received completed, fully complete applications. Uh, pro formas, um, as well as any required supporting documentation that, that um is submitted. Um, with those previously mentioned. Um, and again, those will all be submitted through Salesforce. It's an online platform. Qualifications for applicants. Here we're looking for strong track records of previous uh, uh, of completion of previous similar projects. Um, additionally, we consider staff capacity. Um, is there proper staff in place with experience in, in grants management and general development experience? Um, are there partnerships in place that will help execute uh the project? Um, that, that can be a litany of things from consultants to architects to um. Anyone else like that's helping out, um, people with supportive services. Um, we will also uh look at the financial feasibility of, of these projects. We're seeking projects with clear, complete. Uh, sustainable capital stacks with, with um project-appropriate budgets. Uh, consideration will also be given to hard costs per square foot, developer fees, as well as any significant private or philanthropic uh funding. Uh, we will also uh look for responsible management. Uh, CDA will look at applicants with, with track records of responsibly managing and maintaining. Affordable housing developments. Uh, consideration may be given to local ownership and property management teams. Again, when it comes to the design, we will be looking at uh accessible and sustainable. Um, CDA seeking projects that comply and in some cases exceed federal accessibility requirements. Um, that would be the Fair Housing Act, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, and for more information, you can go to twenty-four CF, CFR, uh, section eight point two-two. Um, additionally, consideration will be given to projects that adhere to universal design principles and any projects that pursue green standards and. Uh, certifications from. Um, uh. Entities uh like Energy Star, um, leadership in energy and environmental design. Or uh the building energy performance standards, um, as well as National Association of Home Builders. Um, and EPA's WaterSense. Those are all part of the design process and, and will give particular notice to, to ones that um. Uh, that exceed and, and meet those expectations. Um, six, supportive services plan and resident uh quality of life. CDA is seeking teams and applicants uh to have experience connecting low and extremely low income residents with health. Mental health. Uh, employment, education, and other wraparound sort of services. Additional projects that uh assist in providing residents with access to transit, healthy food, employment. And educational and recreational opportunities in this surrounding neighborhood are uh given. More uh attention. Um, city properties, this has been talked about a few times. Uh, CDA is seeking applicants who will help activate city and LRA properties. With a particular focus on CDA featured properties. And development efforts that involve multiple city-owned properties. Um, that are either contiguous or in uh concentrated areas. Okay. All right. Um, we'll also uh pay attention to neighborhood transformation as well as uh community support. Um, we're looking for. Uh, proposals that demonstrate support from nearby community members and organizations. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, CDA compliance information and underwriting guidelines. Um. Uh, we've talked a little bit about income guidelines. Um. They are uh twenty, twenty-three HUD's, uh, HUD has produced income guidelines that are still in effect. Um, they are located uh either online on HUD's website, and we also have them on the uh first page of the pro forma under the compliance info. There are uh subsidy limits for each project. Again, that will be on the uh compliance page, uh, as well as the underwriting standards. And then developing costs uh standards. Um. Again, this will be on the compliance uh page. Um, uh, the contingency. Um, for new construction is, is capped at a maximum of seven and a half percent and a minimum of five percent. Um, for rehabs, the minimum seven and a half percent contingency and a maximum of ten percent. Contractor profit and overhead also has various uh caps um attached to it that you'll see on the compliance page. And then again, uh, we, we look for cost allocation and, and leveraging of resources when evaluating these uh uh planned proposals. Operations and deviations, uh, these are simply circumstances that are outside of the norm regarding uh funding. Um, conditions surrounding acquisition or any special circumstances that, that um is specific to the project or property. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the application process, all applica- applications must be completed and submitted again through Salesforce. Uh, the first step for all housing production applications um will be to download the pro forma template. Uh, this tool is, is a downloadable link at the top of the project information page. Um, it's one of the first pages that you'll, that you'll come across for uh in Salesforce. Um, it's an important step, uh, as you will be unable to complete, thoroughly complete any application without uh downloading the pro forma. Um, all required application, application contents must be completed in full. Uh, there will be a Salesforce demonstration. Again, uh, the date is yet to be determined, but we will uh publicly make you aware. Next slide, please. Notification of awards. Uh, CDA will announce selections and funding award reservations after a thorough. Notification of awards. CDA will announce selections and funding award reservations after a thorough and complete review. All respondents will receive written notifications of their status. CDA will also publish a list of all funding awards and recipients on our CDA website. We will announce the selections when all reviews have been made and application sites have been visited by the selection committee. All respondents will receive again written notification of their status and ranking as applicable. And the timeline is not definite as it kind of depends on the amount of proposals that we receive. Generally, it takes about six to eight weeks from when the application period closes to make awards. Next slide please. Applications will be due on April 30th, 2024 at midnight. The application submission is through Salesforce, through the Salesforce platform. I'd like to note to everyone that the published PDFs of the NOFA's indicate a 4:00 PM end time on April 30th. That is incorrect. It is 11:59 PM. We do not recommend that, that people wait until the last minute of course as resources, technical support may not be available up until, you know, the time of, of closing. So we recommend you, you get it in sooner rather than later. Next slide please. Contact info. In order to maintain a fair and competitive selection, staff members are not available to provide individual assistance. Following the workshop, all inquiries must be submitted by email to cda nofa@stlouis-mo.gov. All responses will be posted weekly on the CDA website. Next slide please. CDA is an equal opportunity employer. The funding of this program is financed in part through grants from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Administration under the provisions of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And that's it. Yes. Yes. Questions?
Well, with the bonus points, is that regulated by the?
We can add with the bonus points.
Now, I heard my follow-up question. What is the mile rate of a project near a grocery store? Because if this is supposed to have the, the type of impact that I think it's supposed to have on neighborhood transformation. I hope there are north city St. Louis. We don't have a lot of grocery stores. So what is the mile rate that the project should be? That they give all this point for being near a grocery store? Did it work definition of grocery store? A full-service grocery store? Or is it a convenience store? Is it a convenience store? Is it a facility for, I did check, I thought.
I believe it's.
You repeat the question.
Yeah, for, for every one line, the question was, what's the distance to a grocery store that you would qualify for bonus points? And are we considering full service grocery stores or like convenience stores? It is a full service grocery store and unfortunately I think the radius is 1,000 feet. But, so we're looking at multiple criteria to accumulate those bonus points. So I think it's just one bonus point out of 10 for a grocery store. So you might meet some of the others, whether it's near a school or a rec center or a library or, you know, a healthcare facility or something like that.
I would say though, let me add to that. Most of our NOFA wars historically have been on the north side. So those bonus points help, but that's not enough to, you know what I mean? Like it's not going to throw somebody out because they couldn't get the bonus point because of the grocery store.
Okay, Captain. Does this matter if the school is able or if the school is occupied? Because there are a lot of things where the school that are occupied.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and the question was whether a vacant or, or an active occupied school would count for the bonus points. I think this is really a kind of a data integrity question on our side because the school's data is terrible and we're kind of operating off of the data set that might be a year or two old. So and we, we haven't been able to vet all of that about which schools are actually still open. So you know, it's kind of murky. It could go either way.
I would just, yeah, I would mention in your application, you are near, you know, this school. You know what I mean? If, if it's within that radius, whether or not it's.
And the, the EJI score that I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the Economic Justice Index, that's going to capture a lot of those areas that aren't next to community assets as well. And those, that, that scoring mechanism, please, allows you to get a lot more points versus the community assets portion.
Can I ask you?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you just gave the category, which section? Well, I mean, I don't understand the multiple point line. You may think it's going to be in the. But can you just explain which categories would be exclusive projects that are by school? Which were the ones?
I'm not sure what you mean by category.
In the Bay unit terms that I read.
No, it's in all.
That's all of them.
All of them. Oh yeah, because you're talking about the market and I qualify for the terminal act. How did that tie into making sure who, what projects are listed to the food? Or what kind of, or either renting or getting, getting into the housing project next to a food. You know what I'm saying? That's another question. It's in my head. So like, for example, we, you don't want to determine against somebody's, because they may have a background of sexual exploitation. Right. And you cannot discriminate based on good policy or whatever, the housing project, but this project, this, this particular house project that's funded is next to a food or a year of food. How do you win that determination? Why is that a bonus point is what I'm asking.
Someone predicted the effect was location, manhattan, a lot of the. I was under a.
Right, so why is it a bonus point is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Well, the that's a tenant protection thing. That's, that's different from bonus points.
Analysts can just remember to repeat the question very briefly to the folks at home. We have imperfect audio. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, the question was why is being next to a school versus a criminal tenant protection? But the, the tenant protections aren't bonus points. That's for potential evictions. There's supposed to be tenant prevent, tenant prevention protection. So that's, it's two different things.
I guess I just, this is the question I was saying. I mean.
Yeah.
I listen to the state of private. That's how I was. That's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm listening and. And community engagement. Now, I understand that to the LRA, it's actually community engagement. So I heard it right and knows, you know, kind of chat. So I would hate for somebody to have to do a project and community said, you know, more. And now it's, and.
So how I, the question is about what, I guess, what level of community engagement you need. What I would say is we do, when we do the rating, we look at, does a project have community support? And community support to us doesn't mean a letter from the alderperson. Community support is, you know, I know some applicants in the past have gone to the people living on that block and said, hey, there's a vacant house right here in the middle block. We would like to redevelop it. Do you support it? And they get a petition and everybody on the block signs it. That's the kind of stuff we're looking for as far as community support or the neighborhood association that the projects and the, the community supports it. I mean, we don't expect to have a public hearing or, you know, anything like that. I mean, I can't answer that. If the community didn't support it, could the project move forward? I mean, that's, you're giving us hypotheticals. I, I don't know if I can answer that. Anybody else have an idea?
I think it would have to be.
Yeah, it'd have to be.
Really?
Yeah.
Six neighborhoods around the NGA. Doing so for those six. Rest of, like I said, that's on Friday. Those six.
So the, the comment the gentleman made was if your project is around NGA, the six neighborhoods surrounding it, you have to have community support. Thank you. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'll, I'll print you the correct version. Just remind me before you run it.
Well, can you get those online?
And they're online. And actually on the sign-in sheet, there's a little, there's a QR code and citywebsite slash CDA slash neighborhood dash NOFA, N-O-F-A and find it there.
Yes, ma'am.
If you submit a house in for sale application, would it be to like to also submit a 44,000 dollars? Application after you choose.
So the question is, could, if you submit an application to us, could you also submit one to the Affordable Housing Commission? So their cycle is already closed. So. Their upcoming cycle is when? September? It might be two. That's, that's seven months away and they're not going to make announcements until the end of January. So you're almost talking a year out. So I'd say it's too long. Hey, Paul.
I have bonus points for tax credit properties. What is, move some of the tax credit bonus, under MHCs, for not tax credit.
So the question is, does the tax credit property bonus, is it exclusively limited to tax credit projects or other? Could other MACC funding be, or prior previous home funding be considered? It's limited to tax credits. Anything else? All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate coming up.